All, please, Tori.
Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Power.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Potam Povenkorn.
Here.
And Mayor Devey. Mayor Devey's in absent tonight, thank you.
Okay, we'd like to have our invocation one, you please all rise and Mike Stafford from the Tehachapi Vineyard Church will happily do our opening invocation. You always do such a good job.
This clearly was Nathan Heiner down here.
He was one of my kids, you be good.
He's a good friend of mine, I love him, hi everybody.
I know.
Let's pray together. Father, I'm so very grateful as one of the representatives of this beautiful city. The faith communities, the people that make up this place that we call Tehachapi. And I just want to ask your grace tonight for each and every leader that has given themselves to this city, the various roles, capacities that are represented here for the council members, city manager, our police chief, Lord, all the first responders, all those who day in and day out helped to steward this thing that you've given us. We love our city and we ask tonight for your wisdom, for discernment, for courage to make hard decisions and to do right and well for all. We're grateful. And just pray your grace over each of these leaders as they do what you've given them to do tonight. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, Jeanette would do the pledge. Please, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The baby's seated. Okay, we have the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by our city staff. Thank you for our city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, then it will pass. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do I have any public comment?
I do.
Okay. Yes, oh yes, come on up.
We're approving the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're approving.
Is there one of them?
Hold on, just stay right where you are. No, you can stay there, we'll get to you there. Do we want anything removed or?
There's a public one, I think.
Public as well? Anything removed? Council?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Povenkorn?
Yes.
Or is there a vote, motion here?
Okay, and then we have the audience oral unwritten communications. Ashley, have you, did you, or Tru?
We have someone that wants to speak, but we can let the gentleman go first since he's up.
Okay.
I don't mind, she can really speak.
It's fine.
You go ahead.
Police chief, members, glad to be here in front of y'all. I live next door to Salvation Army and I don't agree with that facility at all. I think they've overgrown that property by five times plus. They have one handicap place there. Most of the people that go there are elders. There's no, there's a designated parking space there. They use the college for that. There's, there's no crosswalk there. It's just, you know, I'm trying to make a nice little impression when I first come into town there, you know? Spending a couple of dollars and my time and stuff, working on a house there that I was giving up on. And it's the first thing you see when you come to town, you know? I love Tehachapi, you know, my family's been here for over 250 years. You know, it's just, it's a good program, okay? But I think they need to buy property, build a whole new facility for that, you know? It just clogs up the neighborhood. There's people that don't have time to come here or even can't come here. I'm speaking on their behalf as well. But I see it firsthand there. They're in my backyard, they're doing drugs in my front yard, they're blocking my exit in the alley. I mean, you know, it's not the way you like to start your guys' day, you know? I mean, you know, it's peaceful there. There's good times, you know, there's times that rushes or whatever, but I'm just, you know, I don't have anything written down or anything, but it's just, it's a good program, but I think they need to add a few things, you know? Maybe some inspirational speaking or about a grow food, you know? I mean, if something really does happen, they're going to be the first ones to go. You know, we all care about people here, you know? They're just, you know, I've tried speaking with the director, I've tried speaking with the chief of the police, you know? You know, chief has been great, you know, but the director over there is just, you say something to her and it just, it's, I don't know, it just gets changed or, there's just no dealing with her, you know? There's no end to any problem that arises over there. I get this stinky attitude from all of them, like I'm trying to stop the program. It's a good program. It benefits a lot of people that need it, you know? But it just brings in a lot of traffic from elsewhere and you wouldn't believe what I've experienced there. But I just, I just wanted to say that, you know? I mean, there's a good place for it, but I don't think it deserves to be the first thing that people see when they come into town. I really don't. Food giveaway, you know, this and that, you know? I don't, you know? But I want to give other people some time, but I just want to put a word in, you know, maybe get some advice on what to do, you know? I mean, you know, it is, there's a total influx of people there. It's not capable of putting up with that kind of influx of people. And they're coming and going like, you know, all day long, they get there early in the morning, you know? I don't know, it's lording or whatever. But they sit there looking around, I don't know, I feel like they're looking in my windows and stuff, you know? It's just kind of like lording, you know? I mean, it doesn't open up till eight or nine, I don't know. You know, but, you know, this is not a good subject, not a happy thing here, but I got to get it out, I live there, you know? I mean, I put up a lot of stuff there. You know, when I bought the place, it was several years ago and, and you see, or whoever changed the zoning on it, you know, devalued by property. Then I did the street, which I'm thankful for, you know? Appreciate that, it inspired me, wanted to do good there. And they, and they, you know, to begin the process, you know, the plant department, you know, they made a mistake. They took another foot to half of my property, you know? Devalued me again, didn't even give me a flower, didn't even say thank you.
If I can.
Because we've got to move on.
Yes, thank you.
I'll get with you because there's some things, I had a meeting with the director the other day, so there's some things that we're talking about to get to your deal. So if you can, let's look the other folks and I'll get with you.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, you're fine, but I know this is more conversation now for you and I at this point.
Yes, sir.
And so I'll reach out to you probably in the next couple of days and set something up so we can talk.
Absolutely.
Okay, I was going to say.
Take your time, I'm sorry to go.
No, no, no problem, thank you. You gave me some info I didn't have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We also have a Mr. Jack Hicks.
For public comment?
For public comment.
Yes, Jack?
From here in the city.
Okay, there he is.
He left a map on your.
Oh, this is the map.
On the map, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was going to.
I'm a longtime resident, 41 years, moved away in Orange County, 23 years. My wife and I were born and raised here. My father-in-law is Jim Grayson, you know who I am, okay. Long story short is, we live on Mill Street, on 816 South Mill, and I've been fortunate to watch my residents for the last two months, I haven't, I've been off. So what I've realized in the two months' time is the first month is that, man, we got a lot of traffic that goes by this street. And as I tried to say hello, could you please slow down? It started getting worse and worse, so I started standing by my truck and taking pictures of people. And once they saw my camera, they thought I was a paparazzi and they'd say, what are you doing? I'm saying, I'm trying to get you to slow down. So long story short, somehow, some way, from Tompkins School, you've got Curry, Pinion, they're running Pinion to Black Oak to Brentwood, they're bypassing the light. So recent count, last Thursday, at 394 cars go by Mill Street. The problem is not the quantity, it's evolved. Tehachapi's small, there's only so many routes to get point A, point B, but they're doing 30 to 45 miles an hour on Mill Street. It's ridiculous, it's getting out of hand. I grew up in this town a long time ago when I was a young man and I was witness, not witness, but my mom and I heard the crash on Tehachapi Boulevard where a woman got killed. That created the stoplight. Since then, we've got five stop signs on Tehachapi Boulevard. They're running the stop sign, they're coming down Brentwood, and they're running the stop sign to see how fast they can go down Mill to get to Battle Boulevard to beat all the people that are stopped at the stoplight. It's ridiculous. My option would be, let's put a sign that says 25 miles an hour on my street, right there at the light post. Put it on the light post because the stop sign is on the light post at the four-way stop. So what's happening now, you got so many people doing the Mill Street, they're running the stop sign on Brentwood to cross Mill to see if they can get down Kelton because there's no stop sign on Kelton. It's a heck of a dip, so they're going to have some tire problems down the road. But before somebody gets hurt, a child, there's 16 kids on this, and I'm representing, I could have brought all 22 homeowners, I could have had a petition, but I wanted to come and let you folks know, you're the custodians of the city, looking for some help here. What do you need from us to present? Do I need to, do I need to get you some speed? I've got about 100 different license plates and vehicle numbers, I know who the, and it's not just one person, it's, it's all walks of life. Their time management is terrible, but a child's going to get killed and I want to know what we can do to prevent it.
Thank you.
And that's my little spiel.
I'll commit a petition.
I talked to Sergeant, I'll get a picture. She said to come for you folks.
Yeah, I'll.
But, you know, let's see, like, speed limit, having somebody stand there, or speed bumps. I'll put in a couple thousand dollars for speed bumps. Let's slow these folks down.
It's, we're, we have the same thing going up and down Mulberry, Oakwood, people speak up and down there to go down to the park, so, yeah, I understand totally.
May I speak to the issue? Because I think I can help. So let me get you my card, I'm the development director for the city. We hold every quarter or so, we receive traffic concerns like this and schedule a meeting in which myself, the police chief, public works director, all get together and analyze them and can get back to you with some feedback. We have one scheduled for the month of June here in a couple of weeks. So let me give you my card. If you guys don't mind emailing your contact information to me, so I have it. And then as soon as we have that meeting, we'll go ahead and bring this issue up and we'll give you some feedback.
We got a car coming by every two minutes.
Understood.
At speeds that are.
We have the same issue.
Understood.
I understand that, we have the same issue on our street.
You remember the house, right?
I do.
Is this school-related, looks like?
Well, yeah.
Is it school-related?
Based on the times.
I don't know.
Well, look at your times.
I think you got school, I think you got people trying to go shopping, I think you got people going freeway. It's, and we're roundabout, we're a V tour, we're a shortcut.
And is it thicker in the morning, and in the afternoon?
During the delivery of school.
You can see the time from the morning to noon.
The speed is constant, the speed is constant.
That's a lot of traffic.
Well, thank you.
We'll take a look at it. Thank you for your time, folks. No, thank you.
Changed a little bit since high school, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're Tehachapi folks, we want to be here a long time too.
Yeah, there you go.
Now I know who it is.
Okay, all right, city clerk report, please.
Any comments?
Oh, okay, go for it. Oh, I go for it. Do we have any other public comment? If none, let's go to the city clerks' reports, please.
The next is actually the community engagement manager reports.
Oh.
Number 10.
Oh, all the way down, oh, because of the consent, I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, council. I'd like to invite Cory Torres, the general manager from TBRPD, Glenda Love, a certified pickleball instructor, to join me on this because we're going to kind of give you an update of what's happened over the last month since you joined us for our grand opening for the pickleball courts. Unbelievable, the people that are out participating on a daily basis, multiple times a day. We're seeing morning, afternoon, and late afternoon play. And based on that and the feedback we started getting, I've been getting emails from the community asking for more, asking for some beginner classes, lessons, clinics, things so they can learn and improve their skills. So based on that, Cory and I have been talking over the last couple of months, they do a great job with some programs, we've come together and we've had some ideas, we want to share them with you before we announce them to the community. So I'm going to share the mic if you don't mind and ask Cory to say a few words. And then I've got Glenda Love, who's our certified instructor, will share a few words as well.
Thank you, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I think that when, I mean, there's been this pickleball craze for some time now and we were approached to kind of come in and partner and be that entity that helps organize and provide some organized programs and clinics. And while I'm not an expert when it comes to pickleball and instruction, these guys have the resources and the professionals and the certifications to kind of come in and offer that. So we are that mechanism, we will, we plan to be that mechanism of organization of people to be able to come in and sign up and partnering with people like Glenda who has years and years of experience with pickleball and instructing and certifying, to bring her in as the instructor. So really happy and excited for the partnership. The courts are being used like crazy out here and I think this is what's being asked up next, is to provide some instruction, some clinics, and to go from there. So again, just really happy and honored for the opportunity to partner. So thank you guys so much.
Hi there. I'm sure.
You can plug that.
Okay, well, I'm Glenda Love, I live in Hart Flan, we've been in this area for about 15 years. I was a previous tennis player and a few years ago I got involved with pickleball. And it's just been so fun. And people say pickleball will save the world. There are so many great communities getting together, people, groups, having fun, people getting off the couches, putting down their devices, building skills, gaining flexibility, mobility, and just having fun. Since I started doing pickleball, I probably have hundreds of new friends and groups of people that we do various things with other than pickleball. My goal is just to share the joy of pickleball and one of the most fun things that's happened over the past month is the number of teenagers who've come out to play pickleball. Instead of hanging out wherever they were hanging out or in their basements or whatever, they're out playing pickleball and it's so much fun and they're talking about forming together a pickleball club at school. And it's just, it's just fun, so I'm happy to share pickleball with everybody and just have a good time.
Yeah, so we're ready to launch online signups, we'll have organized dates, we'll set aside for beginners clinics. Right now, Glenda's been hosting every Tuesday night a free clinic to the community and we've been averaging about 20 attendees each and every Tuesday evening. So it's been that popular and we thought, let's get structured, organized, utilize tbrpd.org to launch and allow people to sign up for the classes. They'll pay a fee that goes through TBRPD, there'll be a little donation that comes back to the police foundation and of course, taking care of Glenda's time. So that's where we're going, it's been very positive. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to take answers.
So you're having a capacity issue as far as scheduling the courts or has it been pretty good?
It's, there's definitely that concern of being sure that we're balanced, that there is public access to the courts, that what we do is organized, structured so that we can use one or two courts for the individual instruction, the group instruction, but still have courts available for the community to play on when they come out. But, yeah, we've, we've overreached capacity on these four courts.
It almost feels like that was planned.
Conspiracy nuts.
So he can get more courts.
That was a great question, sir.
I do agree. I do organize.
We're good for now.
Just asking a question. I just swing by once in a while.
They're very well.
And see if they're being utilized and yes, they are.
They really are.
The only time I don't see them being utilized is when it's hot in the afternoon, they're empty. So if you want to play in the heat, you go for it.
Yeah, that's standard you'll see in a lot of courts, is when it's warm, people will take that as kind of a rest time. But we do see people coming out on their lunch hour. There are some businesses, some folks and employees that are employed at one of our aircraft businesses at the airport, their entire crew comes here, has lunch at picnic tables and they rotate in having lunch and play. So we do get that midday play. But traditionally, it's heavy in the morning and heavy in the afternoon evenings.
Well, and the fire department comes there to exercise and do their thing too, so I've seen them, yeah. And I taught it 35, 40 years ago, before it was ever popular. But anyway, yeah.
The collaboration's outstanding, it's working smarter, not harder, it's a great way to share resources, fantastic, and to solving the world's problems, that is a little serious. There was a gentleman there, you may have recognized him or what I talked about, he is a maintainer for NASA, just moved out here, doesn't know anybody, and by the time he left, he had three dinner invitations for local families. And that's Tehachapi. So that goes to talking about the strength of the community as well. But great job, love it. And I would like to see more courts.
Add some lights maybe in the future, we can play all night long.
Having a good time with playing.
But I think we're ready to launch this in the next day or two as TBRPD's ready to go, so, but we wanted to let you know first.
Fantastic, it's exciting.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, we have airport manager reports, and that was consent agenda, so we have public works director's report. Don Marsh, please.
Thank you, Mayor Potam, and council members. The item I have for you tonight is regarding our asset management system. I think if you were in the budget meeting earlier, you saw that quite a few times in the budget presentation. But the public works department currently utilizes software called Sims, that's the manufacturer that, or the software company, they were recently, or in the last five years purchased by Cardigraft, so it's actually Cardigraft now that provides that software. We use that to manage our work orders that are submitted and executed by the public works department. Work requests are submitted in any number of different fashions, whether it's picking up the phone and calling, we have the text my gov system, we have online request tracker through our website, and we even get emails also from people in the public requesting services. Those work orders, we take that information and we basically, somebody has to enter in all that information and creates a work order manually. Greg calls and says, we have trash over on Tehachapi Boulevard, somebody has to put in a work order and they go pick it up, pick up the trash and then document that they did that and those kinds of things. So the process is very manual, the system is not very user-friendly, and it is definitely not mobile device friendly. It actually does not work with mobile devices at all, whether it's iPads or phones. The software platform has been used since about 2011 and it actually was stopped being supported by the developer about four years ago, 2020. So Cardigraft purchased Sims and Cardigraft has their own system, and so they said, thank you very much for, we were able to buy our competition and now we're not supporting that anymore, but if we have this other system, you're happy to buy it if you'd like. And we did not like it, so just for the record. In November of last year, the public works department began the process of looking at other options for our work order system and really opened the spectrum to what we call, the proper term is asset management system. So it's looking at more than just creating work orders or managing work, it's really looking at the entire lifecycle of an asset. So everything that the city owns, whether it's the city hall building or an asphalt pavement, a sidewalk, water well, those are assets of the city and we have to manage those throughout their entire lifecycle, right? From the moment that we install them to the moment that we discard them, sell them, rebuild them, replace them, whatever those are, we have to manage that. So we looked at about eight different systems to begin with, we very quickly whittled that down to about four, not about, we whittled it down to four, and we formed an evaluation committee of eight public work employees and we participated in vendor demonstrations for those systems and got a really good idea of what they really do and what their capabilities are. Based on that, we put together a formal request or proposal for two of the four systems and we received those and then even had another demonstration from them and really dug into more the nuts and bolts of how this works, how it would work for us, what they're proposing to provide to us. So the public works asset management system committee selected iWork as the preferred supplier for the new asset management system going forward. iWork is a cloud-based software system that will help the city manage their assets through their entire lifecycle, like I mentioned. iWork will streamline our work order management system, manage our asset data, provide staff with remote access to work order history, asset management information and accurately track maintenance costs for all assets. Preventive maintenance programs and routine inspections will be automatically triggered in the system based on preset intervals. So it's a very advanced system, I didn't specifically talk about it, but it is mobile device friendly, so a water operator can be out in the field and say they're, they reported, somebody's reported a water leak, they can go to the water leak with their iPad, they can actually click on their location and see how deep is the water main here, when was the last time we did work in this location, what is the material of the water main or the water lateral or whatever it might be, and you have complete history right at your fingertips. We'll be able to track how much we've spent on that section of water main, we can track how many man-hours, those kinds of things that were spent on all of those, on that asset. So the annual fees for iWorks is $35,000 per year and will be split equally between the general fund, water fund, and wastewater operating fund. So this will be a universal system for all public works departments. Included in general fund is also fleet, so obviously we will be using this for all of our fleet management, all of the landscape assets, everything within public works. So staff recommends that the city council approve the purchase of iWork for the amount of $35,000 per year with a three-year term. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Do I have any questions from the public at this point, council?
I have a couple of questions. I'm guessing you have online support as you're starting to upload this and learn the systems, is that correct? You'll have support or customer support?
For implementation of the system?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, they have a whole team that will be assisting us with that, doing a lot of the manual work.
To set it up?
To set it up, there is a lot of data entry. We're, we've talked a lot about that with the different vendors of how that data gets transferred, because we have some data in our existing system that we're planning on electronically transferring over so that, to minimize the amount of data entry, but there will be still quite a bit because we're looking at getting it much more comprehensive than what we currently have.
So tremendously customizable for what you need.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but at the same time, it's very widely used and very out of the box, although it's customizable as far as what data and things is stored, but this software is used by a lot of cities. We got a lot of references. City of Pismo Beach, for example, actually Cal City uses it, although I don't know to what extent, but they use that. I think Ridgecrest also uses it. So we got a lot of references.
So talking about having a water leak out in the field, would this be something we could look at the history and say, man, we seem to be having a problem in this one specific neighborhood, so we could get ahead of it instead of behind it?
Yep, for sure.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
How much of our infrastructure is actually categorized right now, all of it? Like every lateral, every main, it's in the system? Because you said you could go out, oh, this is an eight-inch or 12-inch, whatever size?
Yeah, we already have that information, but it's in various locations and so this is kind of, would be a central repository for all of that. So we have, we have everything, I don't want to say everything, but vast majority of all the critical things we have, but it's going out and getting it from here and there and then putting it into our system.
Okay, so some of it can be transferred digitally if it's in the right format into the new system?
Right.
But good luck with that, it's probably going to be manual entry right now.
We're hopeful that a lot of, we've been told by the vendor that they're very flexible in the format that they receive it electronically, so I think we can get a lot of it transferred over electronically. I will say that we are planning, and it was, it is part of our budget for this year, is that we will have somebody dedicated within public works to be the works representative to work with the vendor so that there's, we'll develop a subject matter expert within within public works for this asset management system. So they will be dedicated to the implementation and then the further development of the system as well after it's, um, initially implemented.
So everybody gets trained?
Everybody will be trained, however, there will be one person that's the the expert within.
And there will be a backup to the expert?
Yeah, there might be multiple people in, uh, for different areas, but yeah.
I thought we had this on the budget for 150,000.
We do. There's some, going to be some other costs associated with the the implementation of this beyond just the software. I don't know exactly what those are yet, but we did want to put in some additional costs. We might have to get some hardware. Um, there, there may be some other miscellaneous costs. We might end up buying some equipment for data collection and things like that.
For right now, we're looking at about 105,000, three times 35,000?
No, this is $35,000 total.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, split three ways.
So I was going to ask, as we answered all my questions that I have listed here. Cause I was going to ask if you have checked other cities and talked to extra user and how useful the software is.
Yeah, pretty much every city, any, every respectable city now has some form of this. So we're, we're, I want to say behind the times, but our system is very crude for the the size city we are in, the, um, the level of advancement of public works department is.
Yeah, at this time of the era, we want to kind of, we, we may not go way advanced, but you know, at least stay at par. So my other, you know, the comment was you answered that there is a dedicated staff that who does that. And I was, that was my question because, you know, the software is only good if a user uses it correctly. And, you know, I used to program and a lot of times we say garbage in, garbage out. So, you know, your initial data, I hope that you do take time and train well your staff so you can have well structured data entry done, so.
Right, there's, like I said, there's a lot more to it. It has a lot more capabilities than just managing work orders.
Right.
It's really, uh, an overall system for managing public works in general.
It's amazing that, you know. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, can I have a motion then?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim voting for you.
Yes.
Four zero, vote motion carry.
Thank you. I'm going to turn over the next few items to Tyler May here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad I didn't have to call it the call. It's a lot more fun than what we're doing. I always like to have the funnest thing on the agenda, but thanks for making us look bad. But, um, so yeah, uh, Mayor Protim, public corps, council members. I would like to make a request to try to lump together a handful of items here as a discussion and approval. With your guys' approval, I'd like to lump together items 13, 14, 15 and 16. I can talk on each one of them a little bit, but, um, kind of for the sake of time and that. So I want to make sure you guys are, like, good with you guys.
Yeah.
So, um, the items we're talking about today and right now and the next four items is basically just equipment. Um, some of them are, the first two items, uh, item 13 and 14 are, we do have, uh, a pump and we do have a backhoe that honestly worked perfectly fine. However, the state of California has told us that they are no longer compliant with the CARB regulations. They're a little older, on the older side of the scale. Permitting will not even allow us to run the wastewater pump like we have. So, uh, Don Marsh has gone out and as you can see in the staff report, um, gathered three quotes for that. So we would like to, uh, gain approval to replace that pump. That pump would then be brought to the council for disposition and then auctioned at a further date. Item 14 is replacement of the John Deere backhoe that we have. Again, the, uh, this is 2000, uh, sorry, 2003 backhoe. Uh, again, it works perfectly fine. Unfortunately, uh, due to CARB compliance, it is now reaching that point where we have to replace that. So, uh, the cost of going in to retrofit the engine and things like that is is completely off the table. Uh, we currently have a Caterpillar backhoe. We basically have to run two backhoes all the time. So we want to make sure we get that replaced. Um, what you're seeing in that one is a split of the cost between the water, wastewater and the general fund, um, similar to the iWork, uh, software that Don put together there. Uh, and stop me any time, questions, anything we have along there. So those first two items are really driven by CARB. I guess it's just fun to blame the state for that kind of stuff. So that's those ones. Uh, the next, next item we have here is a skip loader. So this is a, as I kind of laid out in the staff report there, uh, our staff has evolved. We're growing and we're, we're, we used to have a lot of part-time staff that do the weeds and trash, right? It was a lot of pick and shovel, a lot of trash bags. But our, our staff are very competent, very skilled operators, which makes the work so much more efficient. But if you come to any one of our planning meetings, it says, I need a tractor. Well, I need a tractor. What do you need? I'll be done by noon. You know, it's just this non-need-to-do, you know, tug of war, which is great. You know, we have a, a good collaborative planning every Thursday with our staff, uh, but we've definitely grown to the point where we need to have enough piece of equipment, which we're going to see efficiency, um, jump there significantly. So that one is specifically funded out of the wastewater fund and the, uh, general fund. They're to the tune of about 131,945. So, uh, I do want to take a step back to the backhoe that I talked about before. Uh, we did get a quote from Caterpillar for a trade-in on that. Um, they, they, they understand the auction market and, you know, we could go through the auction process. Uh, but everything we've seen in the auction market, the, it seems crazy that they're only giving us 17,000, but that's really what a backhoe like that goes for. It's going to be purchased and sent out of state, right? You know, no municipality will use that here. So that's kind of where the, the pricing kind of goes down. And you think, man, I find 17,000, that's a pretty good machine. But, uh, anyway, so that's that. Uh, the skip loader itself, there's no trade-in, no auction going on. That's just a straight purchase, uh, for that piece of equipment. The last item is, um, something we are all very excited about. It is a Ford F-50, F-450 bucket truck. So think about like ATT Spectrum, you know, they're kind of a self-contained service body. And then the guy can get into the bucket and he can go up, up the power pole and do whatever he needs to do. Uh, that's something we're going to be using. We want to purchase for our facilities team, specifically Hugo, uh, putting up the flags around town, Christmas decorations, minor tree trimming, our, our downtown decorative streetlights. Uh, the list goes on and on and on. And, uh, for staff efficiency purposes, this is, uh, going to be amazing for us. Hugo has to get someone to help him. You know, they drive the man lift, uh, drive the man lift around, get him up there. This is very self-contained. It doesn't take away all the need for other help, uh, but it's a self-contained machine for him to take care of a lot. It's going to cut down our rental costs and cut down our staffing, uh, that we'll need to pull from. So, um, that, that, that truck there is 122,631 dollars. Shockingly, I was, I was, uh, very shocked at the cost on that with a big truck full of drive with a service body and a boom. Um, I was actually very happy with that. And, um, aside from the wastewater pump, the other three items are all gone through the Sourcewell process. So the Sourcewell, as you guys recall, um, it's a competitive, competitive bidding process nationwide. Um, streamlines, streamlines a lot for government. Uh, our purchase policy allows us to go through that process. So, um, all these items were approved in the budget meeting you guys had a few hours ago. So this is just kind of us just pretty, as you can tell, we're excited. We want to keep going, want to keep going on these things. Um, some of them have some lead times. The backhoe, um, the guy called me a couple of weeks ago. He's like, I have one here in the yard. It could be there tomorrow. I'm like, well, so we'll see. You know, we will have a ribbon cutting for a new backhoe here pretty soon. So, um, with that, uh, that's a lot of information, a lot of equipment. I'd be happy to answer questions, clarify anything for you guys that you may have.
Any public comments, um, council questions?
So with Sourcewell, these could be coming from any location in the country, but it has to meet California standards.
Well, they all, they all be California standard for sure. Uh, so what, what Sourcewell does is you basically tell them what kind of machine you're looking for and then they'll give you a Sourcewell quote and then you can buy it from whatever vendor that sell. Like for Caterpillar, for example, there are multiple dealers that sell Caterpillar. We use Quinn out of Bakersfield, but the cost doesn't change. If I use the dealer out of San Diego, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
So they hold to what Sourcewell quotes the city? And you can go and go to any vendors that's got one? Availability or?
Yeah, and Caterpillar, for example, you know, they, they happen to have one. But if they have one in, you know, Podesta, they can bring it down to us. You know, they, they're all, you know, pretty interchangeable. But yeah, like Don said, it's corporate pricing where all, all dealers will have to hold that, hold that line.
That's good. Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve item 13, 14 and 15 as.
And 16.
I was wondering how it was going to do that.
I'll second.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim voting for you.
Yes.
Four zero, vote motion carry.
Excellent. Thank you. Go get someone quick.
Developmental Services Director's report.
Good evening, uh, mayor, council members. I've got a number of items for you, so hopefully we're going to, I don't think I can lump them together, but I'll make them quick. So the first one, uh, tonight is a notice completion for the Northside Neighborhood Sidewalk Phase Three project. So, um, as you'll recall, you all entered into a contract with SNH Civil Works for the construction of that named project. That was the construction of sidewalk there on I Street, on the south side of I Street from Green to Davis. Sorry, I had to remind myself. We've, uh, contractor completed that entire job in a week, which was pretty impressive on our end with very limited, uh, change order components. So, uh, success all the way around and at this time a notice completion must be filed in order to close the contract. So I recommend that you approve the notice completion for the Northside Neighborhood Sidewalk Phase Three project and direct us to, uh, record that document. That's my first report.
Do I have any comments from the public, council?
No.
Great job.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the completion of the Northside Neighborhood.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim voting for you.
Yes.
Four zero, vote motion carry.
All right. The next item I have for you similarly is the Tatchby Boulevard Bike Path Fencing Project. So as you'll recall, we entered into a contract with Yukon Fence Company to construct the three-rail fencing, uh, from Hayes out to Stuber adjacent to our bike path. Just on a personal note, we feel like this project just hit the right spot. Um, I'm pretty happy with the product that we got out of the project and the way that it looks. And it just really changes the bike, the comfort to me of the bike path of that facility. So a successful project and so it's time to file a notice completion for this project as well. Um, and so I recommend that you approve the notice completion for the Tatchby Boulevard Bike Path Fencing Project and direct us to record that document.
Public comment, anybody, council?
I just have a comment. I, I was out of town for the weekend and came back home. It was so nice just seeing that fence with the trees and the bike path. It really is very welcoming when you come into town that way. It's just really well done.
Somebody really said to me the other day, I think it might have been Greg, that it takes your eyes off the railroad tracks and pulls them in a little bit to when you're driving on the road, which just changes the look and feel of that road, which is so dominated by the, the tracks. Not that you don't see the train, if that's what you like to see, but it just, it changes your focal point. And I thought that was really powerful.
Well, it's beautiful now that the trees are blooming too. Uh, last year, the trees looked like they were all going to die and I was just shocked at how beautiful they look right now. My only concern is if someone falls off their bike and goes into the fence. That's, I've had that concern ever since they've been, you know, putting that fence up.
Sure.
And I just hope that doesn't happen, but.
Well, nice and straight is the hopeful part. So when you've got the curves, that's when you get particularly worried about that inexperienced bicyclist. I always think of kids.
Exactly.
Uh, you know, but a nice straight shot, hopefully, will, uh, that we won't have an experienced cyclist.
I have a question though. Remember I look at it so beautiful and looks nice. Now trees not very big. Would that tree overgrow and kind of spread where the, uh, the, the path is?
It's going to require some maintenance. I mean, obviously maintaining the tree canopy both over the road and over the bike path is a long-term commitment of effort, um, from the city. I, here's the way I look at it. I, I've heard this anecdotal story about Tatchby a number of times that people used to say that, that a hundred years ago, a cowboy could ride from one end of the valley, other in shade, right? And that's a statement about how valleys to be covered in oak trees. So to me, that's, I, if that's our, that's my goal. I'd love to see that bike path one day be this place where you could ride the entire distance on a sunny summer day and in shade and get a little bit of that back.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, until you want to hurt the bicycle, you know.
No, you'll have to maintain it above a certain, and there are regulations that guide public agencies for how you trim street trees to, to maintain for vehicles and for bicycles, you know, what that canopy needs to look like, so.
Yeah, and I think that was one of my questions when they started putting the trees in. Why are they putting them so close to the road? So if they grow, they're going to go over the road, da, 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 da. And I was, um, informed that that's the state makes you do it a certain way, so.
Along with the type of tree.
Yeah.
Correct.
And the center line seems to have moved over a little bit too, which comes.
Yes, and long-term to that point, when we fill in the last few gaps there, particularly between Dennison and Stuber, the road, the travel lanes will shift away from where that path is now. If you guys recall, I think it's in the aerial photo. We have stretches, stretches there where the pavement's only 26 feet wide. Uh, you know, so that's why the vehicles are pretty close now. But they'll, they'll shift as we widen that road over time.
But I'm not the first one to say this. I forget where I heard of it. The, the type of fencing used just fits the area or in our town. It's very, it's, you know, it's the wooden posts. It's not some, I, I don't care for the plastic that much. There's a reason we use it in certain places, but out there. And I would say that anytime I go by there, there is someone using that trail. It's not just there being pretty. People use it, they walk it and they ride their bikes on it. So it is being utilized. So that's my two cents. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim voting for you. Four zero, vote motion carry.
All right. Ready one? The third item is the Brentwood Drive Pedestrian Facilities Project. So this contract we held with, uh, JL Plank doing business as Send Cow Construction for the construction of Brentwood Drive Pedestrian Facilities Project. So we completed our walkthrough on that project and again noted completion of the project. So as a reminder, this is construction effectively from Duke to Curry. Um, on one side of the street, I think we did the south side, south side, I kept getting them mixed up. Um, and filled in sidewalk gaps particularly to target, um, improving pedestrian, east-west pedestrian access there, because we know a lot of kids come down Brentwood to access Tompkins or some of them are even heading, uh, to destinations further east, high school or junior high. So, um, that, that was kind of one of those areas where we didn't have the facilities we needed. So, um, happy to have completed that project. And so at this time, we need our notice completion. And so I recommend that you approve the notice completion for the Brentwood Drive Pedestrian Facilities Project and direct us to record that document. That concludes my report on this one.
Do I have any public comment? Council question? Do I have a motion then?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim voting for you.
Yes.
Four zero, vote motion carry.
Ready for the last one? This, uh, the fourth item I have tonight is the Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. So, um, this is a new grant program for the city that we've not applied to in the past. It is similar in nature to the Urban Greening Grant, which was the project that funded the trees on the Tatchby Boulevard and Bike Path. Um, and so a little bit of background, this program comes to us through the U.S. Department of Agriculture from 2023, the Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Program. Uh, there's a, uh, 1.5 billion dollars in federal money for states and projects and national incentives. Um, and the goal is, um, is, is trees in urban environments. And so, and the benefits that they produce for communities. So they reduce the heat island effect, making communities cooler, reducing power, um, expenses. And then they make facilities, if we do it strategically, they make facilities like those bike paths a lot more attractive for use, which is good for health benefit, um, as well as for commuting and moving about our community without necessarily having to have a car. So those are just a few of the benefits associated with programs of this nature. Um, and so the USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Program is, uh, part of President Biden's Justice 40 Initiative. Um, and again, it was 1.5 billion. And so the goals are listed there in your staff report associated with, um, with what the, the stated program goals are. So we pay a lot of attention to this kind of stuff when we write grants, like, so that we can see if our idea fits with what they're looking for, because if you don't, I've, I've known plenty of people that write grants pretty ineffectively that way. You kind of miss step one, which is make sure that what you want to do is something they want you to do. Uh, we feel like this project is, there's 30 million available here in the state of California for. We feel like this project is. There's thirty million available here in the state of California for projects of this nature. And so one of the components of the Urban Greening Grant we were not able to complete that was on our wish list that we couldn't do the last time, was to make improvements to Antelope Run between our parking lot on the south edge of town there at Tucker near High Line, right there below the dam, all the way north to Tatchby Boulevard. We have Antelope Run and the bike path that we have there that's now fully paved and pretty heavily utilized. I know I actually drive to that location and so that I can take a walk or, or take a bike ride. And so it's pretty heavily utilized. And so the goal would be, we wanted to, with the previous project, install trees in that location along that path. Maybe not with the same density as Tatchby Boulevard, but to improve the utilization of that path. But one of the big hurdles to that was the irrigation systems out there were, were effectively non-existent. And so that's a pretty difficult hole to plant the trees, and then the more, one of the more expensive components of a project like that is extending the irrigation systems to make that work. So with this project, we're proposing about a million-dollar application to plant a minimum of three-hundred-and-fifty trees along this one-point-two-five-mile section of Antelope Run. That's the grant application or the, the rough boundaries of it. That Antelope Run is owned and operated by the Tatchby Cummings County Water District. And so before we endeavored to write the grant application, we met with John Curry and Tom Nysler from the district and went over the specifics of this project and really appreciated and wanted to point out their support of this effort. And, and as they were supportive the last time we talked about it, we just couldn't make that component of the project work. So glad to hear they're still willing to work with us on this, and so I wanted to make a point of noting that in my staff report. So we have completed the grant application now and ready to submit. So what we need from you all, one of the requirements of grant application is a, is a public resolution from the council stating your intent to support the project. It is one-hundred percent grant-funded, the intent is no match requirement if we are successful in the grant application. And again, it's about a million-dollar project to complete the irrigation and tree planting along Antelope Run. So I recommend that you adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program funding and stating the assurances to complete the project. So that concludes my report.
Do I have any questions from the public audience, council?
Who's gonna do the, now the, the Water District has an easement, is that why they own the actual land part of it?
Yeah, the, the Water District owns in combination, both in fee and in easement, they own the drainage path that runs through that entire length. And then as part of that, there is a separate sixteen-foot easement that is in the city's name that overlays the bike path. But that easement is subordinate to TCCWD because the drainage facility is the primary purpose of that swath of land. And so we needed, we, we have to have their permission under the terms of the easement to make modifications to that, that bike path section. We foresee that some of the trees might actually land outside, too, of the sixteen-foot easement area as we work through this. And so in those cases, we'll be looking to either have a further easement or simply have permission from the Water District to plant those trees and irrigate and maintain them, so.
So on East Tatchby Boulevard, they've gone to great lengths to give those trees support, whether it's three poles plus an additional middle pole for support, so these things aren't all leaning toward Mahoney.
Yes.
As every tree in Tatchby does. So I would assume we'd get the same type of configuration for the planting because of the wind, that we don't want these things to be whipped to, to nothing by year one.
Yeah, that grant application required us to purchase no larger than fifteen-gallon trees, which, if you're a gardener, fifteen-gallon tree is not a very big tree. So that's why on that project, we sort of pioneered the, the three-pole plus the center pole staking technique to deal with the wind. If you can get a larger tree, you can typically get away with just the three-pole staking without the center pole, because it's healthier for the trees. But that's effectively our new standard. I know, not to steal the thunder at the new park, but you'll see all the trees out at the new park with the three-pole staking arrangement. So, yeah, we are, whenever we're planting new trees, we're, we're investing extra at the planting stage in order to try to get them to grow right.
So will our landscape contractor, Brightview, be doing the maintenance?
That's the presumption, if we receive the grant, yes.
Okay.
But I think that's subject to years from now and working through it with public works, yeah.
Okay.
And so are we looking at the area, the, the lot from like High Line all the way down to Valley and beyond on the bike path with all the open lots there? Because I bought three-hundred-and-fifty trees, that's quite a lot of trees.
It's even further than that. So we're starting, do you know where we built that little parking lot a few years ago?
Off of Tucker?
Off of Tucker.
Yeah.
Where you can get onto the bike path. So starting there and going all the way to Tatchby Boulevard.
Okay.
So past Cherry, past Valley, all the way to Tatchby Boulevard, those three-fifty would be spread along that entire route.
Yeah, because I want three-hundred-and-fifty trees, I said, that's a lot of trees.
It's three sides, too.
Yeah, and it's both sides, and I don't, yeah, it won't be like one every twenty feet. They'll, they'll, they may be clustered in groups, and we're gonna let the landscape designer give us advice on that.
I'm sure they'll make you plan it a certain way to stay.
Yeah, yes, they will.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogankord?
Yes.
Four zero, vote motion carry.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have city managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor Proton Pogankord. Three things I want to remind the council and the public about. All three are really great events. This Wednesday evening at five P.M., Adventist Health, Tatchby Valley, will be hosting or celebrating their five-year anniversary. It's been a little more than five years, actually, since they took over operations at the new hospital in Capitol Hill. But they're inviting the public to come celebrate with them. So it's this Wednesday, day after tomorrow, five P.M., open to the public, so hope to see everybody there. The next thing is Farmer's Market starts on Thursday. So this week will be our first Farmer's Market of the season. We're very excited. I know Key and Maya and Jessica have been working very, very hard on this year's market, so we're excited to be hosting that once again. And then a week from today, Monday, June tenth, at ten A.M., we will be hosting our ribbon cutting, the Valley Park. It's not completely done, but we need to get it open. And there are some significant delays in some equipment that is gonna take us deep into the summer. We're just not willing to wait that long, and it won't affect the, you know, the operations of the facility. So we'd like everyone to join us, ten A.M., Monday, June tenth, at Valley Park for ribbon cutting. We're gonna have some great opportunities. We have an area of public works to set aside for wet concrete, and we're going to invite the council and all the kids in the community to show up and put your handprints. So it'll be memorialized there for many, many years. No scratching your name, just a handprint. And then Walmart has donated a hundred or a couple hundred soccer balls, and we have lots of little goodies that we're gonna be giving out. So very excited about opening this new park for the particular neighborhood. So please join us for all three events. Thank you.
Council member reports, anybody? I was just gonna comment on, you know, how nice Tatchby Boulevard is looking with the trees blooming, and also Valley Park. I'm getting excited about that, so hopefully everything will work out.
Me?
Yep.
I'm probably gonna go off here, but I just, Chief, if you wouldn't mind telling us about the, the police arrest that happened recently? There was a press release out, the people were caught at Walmart today.
Oh, yeah, we, just people coming up from Bakersfield stealing and.
But they stole a significant amount, correct?
Yeah, I think right off the top of my head, I think it was over a thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, well done, well done, because we, we wanna make sure that people in Bakersfield get the message not to come up here, we're not easy targets, so.
Yeah, they are. We went zero tolerance, cars towed, people going to jail. You wanna come up here and steal and we catch you, you're going to jail.
That's right, that's right, because that happened on a couple of areas, so congratulations, that was really well done.
Thank you.
Things are picking up, and summer is definitely here. About a thousand things are going on, our community theaters, at our parks. And we got Mountain Festival coming up, Apple Festival coming up, tons of things going on. And it's just, there's always something to do in Tatchypee, and it's fabulous. But that's, that's all I have, nothing really serious.
Very good. Nothing for me tonight?
Nothing, okay. Anybody else? Okay, if that's it, we'll.